Good evening and welcome to our January 19th Goals and Priorities of our Department Heads Work Session. This is an opportunity for the department heads to share out their goals and priorities for the year and for the town board to ask any questions or gain further understanding. So, without further ado, I'm going to introduce our assessor, Chris Lyon, and we will go from there.
Okay. Our goals and priorities have not changed a lot from last year as we were starting to work on the revale at that point. And the biggest things coming up personnel-wise, we did lose somebody last January, so we are looking to replace them on a part-time basis. It was a full-time person that we have lost before, so.
Thank you.
And let's see, what else we got here? That's mostly costs for the mailings for the revale, which will somewhat be reimbursed by the state. There's always a pot of money they divide up between how many towns do it, so it's never clear how much they're going to pay us for it, but it is something at least. I filled out all the paperwork correctly for that, so that should be on the way by next year sometime.
Thank you.
Barbara can look out for that. And specialized training, just ongoing courses and workshops for both me and my staff. Lately, the offerings have been fairly thin with COVID, and the state has really shut down a lot of their training, which they previously had in Batavia. So hopefully, things will straighten out and maybe that'll start up again. They're really good hands-on classes for, especially for my staff.
Great.
And major projects involved other departments. We basically support the building department, who also supports us by telling us what the new permits are and such. And planning in sewer as well, as far as new construction and making sure all these special districts are properly applied. And big purchases this year, we do have in the budget for a new car. We have not gotten the state bid prices yet, but we're planning on trying an electric vehicle. Figure with, you know, the use it gets, we're the perfect guinea pigs for it. We can see how it works out. Other departments could borrow it and see if it might be suitable for them and keep our repair costs down a little bit.
Absolutely, and you are mostly local miles, so it works out very well, in fact, entirely local, right?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay.
Um.
Anything else?
Any questions? Anything? That's pretty much it. It's pretty much ongoing from last year, so.
And I know you just presented to the town board last week, so I think
Yes.
we probably do have a lot of our questions already answered. Anything else? Okay, well, thank you.
Okay.
Very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next, we have Andrew Irkfits. He's our Director of Recreation. And you won the fight to come first, second? Okay.
I'll say I lost graciously, yeah.
All right.
So, I did just want to kind of touch on some 2021 information, just to give an update on some key things that I think our staff did really well with the rec department. Just modifying the location of programs, how we offer programs at different parks, whether it be external places that are outside of the community center, offering them in the community center and Zoom at our amphitheater. I can't say enough about the recreation staff that we have and their flexibility and their ability to kind of modify our programs. And one of the things that speaks to that is, we did hit, I'm going to say that we hit, but we were $236 off our final revenue budget. So out of $501,000, we were $236 off for being 100% matching, so I'm going to round up and consider that being that we met our goal.
Does Barbara think that?
That's why Barbara's going to go after me.
Oh, okay.
She can correct that, but just still wonderful considering, you know, the staffing that we had, staffing taking on a lot of extra responsibilities as we shifted and hired a new rec leader who came on with wonderful ideas. But if you look at the programs that we offered, we offered 1,271 programs and 1,113 of those programs ran. So that's 88% of our offered programs ran, which during a time of a pandemic and all the things that are happening, I just am very thrilled at that number. So I think it kind of shows what our rec department can do. And looking towards 2022, we're hoping to build on that and hopefully do better. Also, all of our events, we were able to hold, maybe not at previous capacity or to the same level, but just being able to hold them back in 2020 when we had to cancel our Fourth of July and things like that. It just speaks again to the rec department and other town departments that we worked with that modified things to make sure we could offer those to the community, because I really think recreation is going to be a vital thing coming out of the pandemic for our community to be able to participate and have some fun and hopefully get well and be happy. So looking at our 2022 priorities and goals, one of the big first ones is restarting our aquatic program offerings. In 2020, when COVID hit, the pool, our community pool is located at the high school. And due to some insurance and obviously with the pandemic, for insurance purposes, we held off being allowed to have aquatic programming at the pool. We weren't allowed back in until the summer of 2021. So technically, we've had two seasons where we could do aquatic programming, but in terms of staffing, whether it be lifeguards, our full-time staff person who retired back in 2020, I just think we're going to start looking at 2022 hitting the ground running, trying to restart that program. So lifeguard certification courses to bring in some new staffing, hopefully a full-time staff person to oversee that, and really offer some of those swim programs for the youth and also kind of water walking and lap swim for adults. Another priority and goal is we're looking to expand our community partnerships and sponsorships. Again, coming out of COVID, with our events kind of stopping in 2020, we had some sponsorships and partnerships last year. One of the bigger ones was Brown Croft Community Church came in as a partner and helped out with four different events. And we just saw huge numbers for our Halloween and Santa Winter Olympics where we used to get maybe 1,000 people. We were at 1,600, maybe 1,800 for our Halloween event. So again, during a pandemic time, having them come in, offer some other activities and arts and crafts, and really just being there and volunteering and supporting the community, it was really nice. So we're looking to grow with that. Obviously.
Can I interrupt you?
Yeah.
Only because I wanted to ask a question about
Sure.
the swimming piece of it.
Oh, of course.
So, thanks. On the piece of that, I know you're starting it back up again, about how much use, time-wise, or is it that we get, that we get, the town gets to use that pool versus the school district using it for their events?
So, so the school district has a new athletic director, Mary Beth, who we've met with. And kind of coming out of this time, we did really look at, you know, what has been done in the past in terms of what did Penfield Recreation use? We also have groups like the Sea Dragons and other groups that come in and use the pool. So we certainly don't want to overtake all the hours from Penfield Recreation, but right now, we're looking to have possibly four to five days, or three to four days a week, and then a Saturday roughly around maybe 20 hours a week. And that would be wish list if we got all of our program in there. Most likely in 2022, we're not going to be hitting all of that due to staffing and really just availability, but that's at least the hope. And then Sea Dragons would have probably five to six days a week in there for their practices.
So you, so would you, is it safe to say then, there's more interest in the swimming than, obviously if you don't have the staff to handle it? And is there more interest though in more programming in there? We would be able to use it more than just halftime if you had the?
Definitely, yeah. We've heard from residents, as I know the supervisor's office has as well during this time, wanting it to come back. But again, you know, due to staffing and lifeguard certifications and the workforce right now wanting to come in and work during a pandemic, it's been difficult to try and start that up, especially without a full-time person to really focus in on it, the staffing aspect and also the programming. So we've been trying to piece it together, hoping that it comes together, but we'll kind of see what happens in 2022.
Thank you.
Have you struggled with getting certified lifeguards?
And when the summer opened up back at the pool, we tried right away to have some lifeguard certification courses during the work week, thinking that, you know, kids are off in summer, high school age, maybe college-age kids to come in and try to garner up some staff through that. Unfortunately, with the way that it just worked with the communication when the pool opened, we couldn't get that information into the brochure. We tried to advertise it through our rec e-news, through our Facebook site and our website, but we didn't have anybody enroll. We've reached out to previous staff, but again, it's been a year and a half, almost two years, and we're primarily high school and college-age students where, you know, I should actually say for myself, who, I don't even really know what I'm doing the next day. For them, I'm sure that their plans change just as frequently with jobs and things like that. So we haven't had too many responses from previous staff to be able to say they work, especially when we really don't have adequate programming planned yet. So it's tough for us to say, yeah, we're planning on these nights and these times, but we can't plan on having those without having staff, so it's kind of a catch-22, I guess, with staff.
And then the situation changing hourly practically with COVID, so.
True, yeah. Yeah, hopefully, you know, fingers crossed, we're getting towards the end of the tunnel, but you never know.
Continue.
So back to community partnerships and sponsorships. We really didn't do too much sponsorship last year just because we weren't sure, again, if we were going to have all of our events, so it was kind of tough to ask different groups for sponsorships. Since we did have all of our events last year, we're hoping to do the same this year. We have an upcoming community events meeting, which I look forward to for the town, for all of us to discuss dates and approve everything and just share ideas for possibly some new events or some changes to them. So with that, I'd like to reach out to some new sponsors around and try to get some support. Another part of the partnership and sponsorship is re-establishing our friends of Penfield Rec 501(c)(3) group. That kind of took a halt in 2021. With that group trying to start up during COVID, it was difficult to plan the meetings. We're trying to figure out, you know, at what capacity is the rec department and the town involved in starting them up and assisting them? So we're going to have a meeting soon to decide that, but we're hoping to get the ball rolling with the 501(c)(3) group to really get that for the community, for a lot of people that do ask for that on tax-exempt status when they're donating and other things. Are there any questions on the partnerships and sponsorships? Okay. For the next one, it's detailed community athletic field and indoor space assessment. This one actually goes back all the way to 2020. During this time, just with us focusing on programming and other things at the rec department, we've kind of held off on this one. We're hoping in 2022, at least in the spring, when we're looking at athletic field use and things like that with sports groups, that we can get a detailed report. We also know the town is looking to add some fields at Raw Office. I'm working with Tim at Parks to try and move some fields around as well, so it does seem like a good time to do inventory for not only what the town has, but what the community has when we're looking towards future sport group use. And then the next one is begin the process for a community center facility plan. This is also a master plan update recommendation from 2019. We're really just, once we get to a point where we can start to focus on things like this with staffing, we'll kind of bunker down and look at, you know, what all the other communities are doing in terms of their facilities. I do know, I believe, three other communities within the last year or two have built or renovated new recreation or community centers. So it's nice to see that we have those types of facilities around to get a basis for, but also look at other communities that have had them for 10-plus years to be able to say, this is where it was and this is where it is. So we'll also look to get community input, staff input from our instructors, and really just look at the best option for what Penfield could have in the future. And then lastly, continue to expand on adult program offerings. This is current and going through 2022. We really have a high youth program participation, and the department really just wants to look at what type of programming for maybe the college age all the way up to adults that we can try and get out to the community. We have had some success with just pop-up type programs, but unfortunately, those happen fewer than our other programs that are, you know, eight to 10 weeks long, multiple times a week. So we're continuing to look at that. I know some programs in 2022 are already successful, like a dog walking for trails and things like that that we're putting into there. So again, our new staff that have come on have come in with great ideas, so we're just looking to expand on that for this year. In terms of identifying any change in resources, this is another one from 2021, just to talk about evening and weekend part-time rec staff at the community center. We have a facility staff that kind of monitors the building, helps do setups for instructor programs for people that use the facility Monday through Friday, and that goes between about 5:00 p.m. all the way to 9:30 or 10:00 p.m. We ask a lot for our facility staff. In terms of communication during COVID, it's very difficult as things change every minute and every hour. So to rely on that person, I can't speak highly enough for them being able to do what they do, but they're also pulled in many other directions. So in terms of a customer service type thing, looking at maybe evening and weekend part-time rec staff to have maybe a desk there to answer phone calls at the community center, assist with library patrons, with rec department patrons, you know, point people in the right direction at the community center, and possibly even, you know, help people when they're trying to register after 5:00 p.m. Our staff during the day does a wonderful job at monitoring that stuff, but we all know that a lot of parents and people, after the workday happens, that's when they're probably focused on recreation and going to those places. So that was just something we were looking at to try and expand on for the community center. And then specialized training is similar to years before, just state conferences and local conferences with GVRPS that we regularly go to, our defensive driving and first aid and CPR, which mostly all the staff get, whether it be summer camp or aquatics. And that's pretty much all I've got for 2022.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Andrew, how many, I'm sorry, how many staff members do you have during the week right now in the office?
Full-time?
Yeah.
So we've got two clerical full-time staff and a permanent part-time clerical staff that works from 9:00 to 1:00. And then we have myself and three other full-time programming staff.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Have a good night.
Yeah, go Bills.
Thanks. Up next, we have Barbara Churto, our Director of Finance.
Hi. You guys already have the accomplishments and the goals and priorities for 2022, but I'll just kind of cover a few highlights from 2021. We, as you know, we did hold the tax rate at $2.78 for 2022 budget, so that was accomplishment of the majority of the board members up here. Few changes. And we did, again, with the susceptibility to fiscal stress, our score was lowered to 0.00, so it really can't go any lower. The year prior to that, we were at 1.7. If you recall, that it's the comptroller's scale and with no designation with our low score, there's no susceptibility to financial stress until you get to 45. So we're at zero, so we're a long way off of that. Banking, we continue to have M&amp;T as our lead. We do work with Canada Go National as well as M&amp;T for investment opportunities. 2020 and 2021, the interest rates were not good, so we're hopeful that they start picking up again in 2022, so we will continue to look for where we can invest and obviously still have substantial liquidity as is required. Insurance-wise, we once again received the Monetary Workplace Safety Award in 2021. That was something new from the Comp Alliance that we joined back in 2017, and we actually pay less now for workers' comp insurance than we did in 2017. So they put in this workplace safety award, and it was, the first year was 2020 and the second year was 21, and we got it both years. And it is, they give us money back for having a safe workplace, so then we just apply it to our expenditures. But with that, I have to say thank you to, I mean, a lot of our workers' comp cases are from DPW, so the fact that we've seen a substantial decrease in workers' comp cases, I have to give credit to Eric Tate, working a lot with Tracy on safety programs, and I think that's been a big thing for why our workers' comp is where it is. On our other side of insurance with liability, if you recall, we did go out to brokers for the '21-'22 renewal. We did stay with USI, which is our current carrier. I do anticipate that we will stay with them again and go to the market probably for '23- '24. We've been very satisfied with how they do handle our liability claims, which thankfully, on that side too, we don't see too many of them, so we'll keep that going too. Risk management, we continue to have our monthly meetings. I work closely with Tracy on all the training opportunities and with Eric. We will be doing a tour of, we've done the town facilities, like the main buildings, but in 2022, when it's not freezing cold out, we will do like Dolan White Lodge and some of the peripheral buildings. We kind of do a walkthrough inspection with all the safety committee just to see, like fresh set of eyes, if there's things that, you know, are, need to be improved. So we'll be doing that probably, I'm thinking April. So that's kind of recap 2021. 2022, I do hope for, on the budget side, we've had Logix, which is our financial software program since 2014. Admins, who has now owns Logix, they have developed a new finance program, which I've been looking into for a little less than a year, but I'm kind of hoping they make, it was just rolled out, so they're kind of still tweaking it. It was kind of their beta test last year. So I'm kind of hoping to move to their newer platform, which has a lot more robust things for financing. Fingers crossed, we'll be able to integrate with Paychex and have everything be not manual anymore. That's been our goal, to kind of get those two software programs to talk to each other. So we're hopeful that that'll happen.
Quick question. Is that, is it possible that Logix would also talk to DocuWare?
Unfortunately, no.
Okay.
Because of the type of program DocuWare is, more of a file sharing. It's kind of a flat program. It's, so it doesn't have an exportable file that could feed into Logix. Paychex does, because it's a little more, it'll make ASCII files or text files that we can bring over, but with DocuWare, it is more kind of what they would call a flat program.
I mean, it's great. I just wondered if they would ever talk to each other?
No.
Thanks.
We asked that early on, unfortunately. They couldn't make that work. And then, as I mentioned before, with the banking side of things, we stay with M&amp;T. We stay with KeyBank, which also handles our health savings accounts, so we stay there. And as I mentioned, hoping to see rates improve with some investments. Purchasing and expenditures, I work very closely with all the department heads, and as you know, we just updated and tweaked our purchasing policies for 2022, which you guys did at the organizational meeting. Kind of review that all the time, just to make sure that we're in line with any changes with the state level in particular for the purchasing regulations. What else? Personnel, we have me and two part-time people that work in finance, so we don't anticipate changing that for 2022. Specialized training, I take training through GFOA and New York State GFOA, as well as through the Association of Towns. I will continue to be on the Western Regional Council of the New York State GFOA. I was elected to that in 2020 and re-elected in 2021, and I think I'll be re-elected in 2022. That's just to participate in their committees that we kind of review all their training programs, as well as anything they have online to offer to all our members, and it's based on the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, so we've, that's kind of been a fun thing to do, because it's working with peers throughout the state, so I do enjoy that. And do training with Logix when it's there. We kind of, as they update throughout the year, we kind of teach ourselves, but we also can lean on Admins for some help as well. And then with some changes with other IT products, we'll be doing training, which Tracy will speak to, on Office 365. For other departments, obviously, I work with all the departments, particularly when we develop the budget, but I work with them throughout the year. Right now, we're working, I'm working closely with engineering as well as HR as we prepare to close out 2021 and prepare the financial statements, as well as the annual update document. They, we have GASB 34, which is the infrastructure, which Mark and Sarah from engineering are great. They give me all those facts. And then human resources for all our OPEB obligations, which is the other post-employment benefits that we have to include in our financial statements per the GASB 75. So we've been working on that, and the auditors will be coming in in February. It's hard to believe they're already back again, but they are. And then any grants and applications, I work with whichever department head. Typically, it's DPW or engineering, which tend to get grant applications that they need assistance on financially. 2023 will be budget development, and that will also be here before we know it. We'll start that in June-ish. I'll start a little ahead of that, but start talking to the department heads and the multi-year capital improvement plan that we continue to review with the department heads throughout the year, just to kind of reassess priorities when we're looking at long-range plans for what will happen in the town in the next five to six years. Other than another pandemic, that was something we didn't predict, so we can't look out too far. And then our risk management committee, we will be having a new person from the library with the retirement of Bunny Brinkman. She was on our committee, so I'm not sure who that person will be yet, but I will find out shortly. That's kind of everything in finance in a nutshell. I probably breezed through it a little quick, but I know, you know, you guys are pretty familiar with everything, so any questions on what I provided or any other questions on other topics?
I just have one question, Barbara. And I probably should have asked Mr. Alliance when he was here, but when you mentioned how you help with grants, is there any opportunity maybe for, with his, the electric car, possibly any green grants?
Actually, Eric was, he was looking into that, because with the NYSERTA and with, I can't remember the other acronym. But yeah, Eric actually was when we, because we've been talking about doing an electric vehicle, obviously, and as we continue to put in electric charging stations throughout the town. So I can circle back with Eric when he returns and just find out, you know, if there's any opportunities there, because we've obviously been, you know, working through that with, for the charging stations as well, and then.
Actually, Catherine Dubruck just handed me something today. So it's not open just yet. They have not announced when it's going to open, possibly March, but we'll be able to apply for that. And if you let me know tomorrow, I'll give you a copy of it. I just got it.
Well, that was perfect timing.
Anything else?
Anything else? I do want to say that I think what's impressed me so far along this way is the amount of activities that the department heads are involved in professionally, in the state, you know, in the county. I think that really just speaks to the level of expertise that our department heads have. So they're very involved and they're sought after to participate in things. So, congratulations.
Thanks. Okay. Now, thank you.
Turn it over to Tracy.
Hello.
So I have two distinct, different areas to discuss. So I'll start with kind of my primary responsibility, and we'll start with human resources. So I'll start with kind of my primary responsibility, and we'll start with human resources. So as indicated on the paperwork probably in front of you, for our 2022 priorities and goals, one of the bigger projects that we have coming soon is a payroll update. We had been looking at some different payroll vendors last year, and in the midst of that kind of search, Paychex, who is our current vendor, said that we were going to actually have kind of a forced migration. The platform we were on, they were no longer supporting, and so at that point, we knew there wasn't going to be time between having to comply with the mandate of migration to the new Flex program with Paychex, and then trying to squeak in a new vendor in that short of time. So we are going to go with the migration to Flex through, with Paychex. So that is always a kind of nail-biter for us. We look at the history that's, you know, in our files now, but at least staying with the same vendor, we know that that, we're hoping that migration will go smoothly. I know some other towns that have used Paychex, Paychex has, have already gone through it. So hopefully, learning a little from their experiences. With that is going to come, obviously, training for all staff, because it's going to basically hit almost everyone that either enters their own hours, works in the different departments as the payroll liaisons that compile bi-weeklies, and most definitely, the way payroll's processed and things like that for HR staff. So there's going to be a lot that goes with that. I think we're slated to kind of start that in coming March, as early as March. So that's going to be, it's even going to involve new time clocks for DPW. So it's, it is going to be a kind of a major overhaul, even though we're staying with the same company. It is our hopes that if we're unsatisfied with some aspects, there were some other vendors that were very, you know, intriguing to us, that weren't going to be much more, you know, financially weren't going to be much more, that had greater capabilities. We still might look at that in the future, but we do think that this migration is a perfect way to kind of clean up where we are, and so then a further migration might actually be a little bit more seamless, you know, going from instead an antiquated Paychex to something that's a little bit more, you know, technically savvy with the third party, but going to a more tech-savvy with our current one, and then still have the potential of possible movement to a different vendor down the road. That's just pushed off a little bit further. Training always in HR, always is important and pertinent. So we have moved, I think when we met this time last year, we talked about how we had moved to using online platforms for training instead of live and in-person, obviously due to COVID. Not only has that been a respite and kind of, you know, a more COVID-friendly approach, it has, it has actually taught us that all around, it's a better approach. Instead of bringing entire departments out for in-person and doing things, you know, kind of en masse, it has allowed for a little bit more flexibility within departments and their staffing, not all the, you know, to do when it fits them the most. So currently, we've either assigned and given a timeframe to have it completed, usually a month or so. So within that month, we know that they're, they're doing their, you know, mandatory training. So we're going to continue along that path, because it has been so successful. And also look at the available other, besides mandatory trainings that we must comply with. We'll look at expanding that to just other pertinent, helpful, useful trainings that, you know, that most employees, you know, somewhere in there can, can use and benefit from. We have then their next kind of major bullet point of employee engagement and communications, again, another always important piece of the HR function. One of the things that, as I was sitting here, remembered that I had failed to include on here, but part of that employee engagement is we will have with our one union, we will, their contract expires at the end of 2022, so we will be starting off on negotiations. Usually, we start maybe about six months, so we'll be looking at, hopefully, launching those in, in June. Other pieces of employee engagement and communications, we are lucky that, and it has been this way even before Laura, Laura Sliker, who is an employee in HR, she's been the wellness lead and has done great work with Monthly Challenges, the Wellness Fair, hoping to build, continue to build and create a more robust and involved wellness committee. But because, like I said, she's in HR, it's, it's a good, it's a good fit, because it is, you know, so employee-centric and based, and we know how to reach everybody, and we know who everyone is. So that has been, been helpful. So we continue, her hope is to continue to grow that. Also, continue to build on employee workshops, offerings, just informational meetings, whether it's about our benefit packages, even things that don't necessarily, you don't necessarily think. We had one come in not too long ago about, you know, the inter, social security. Well, those that are going to be looking at retirement, you know, is a webinar, you know, free webinar offered, so why not, you know, broadcast that out and, and have employees take advantage? COVID updates instill an ever-changing landscape. We're not through it yet. I actually enjoyed Andrew's optimism about when this would be over soon. I've been, we've been saying that for a couple of years now, but just keeping everybody apprised, as you know, the, whether it's even isolation and quarantine regulations that have been changed lately, just making sure that those affected employees are aware of what's expected from them, as far as documentation, about where we stand, who returns, when you can return. Just making sure that that is communicated to all our department heads and staff in general, to make sure that, you know, kind of helping them along the process and they know what to expect. Next major bullet point, again, these, these don't change generally from year to year, so for the two new members, this might be exciting. For the three of you, I know it's not. But Policies Handbook and Compliance, that's a big part of HR, where staying current and compliant is imperative with all state, federal, local rules and regulations as they come down. Also, and he's not here, and I haven't mentioned this to him, so if he's watching, Chris Tenay, I'm hoping to, which is our communications director, I'm hoping to wrangle him into a, an overhaul of our handbook project, just to give, again, we've been talking about this for a little, it is just, it is a very big, major project to get done. And it's just, how do we cover everything? How do we have a singular voice? Our current handbook is piecemealed by different people, have added different parts through the time, and we'd just really like to, I would really much appreciate that, as I'm sure most employees would, to have a little bit more succinct, easy to read, easy to understand, and also kind of through the years, as we've lost or changed some of our common practices, to make sure that those, you know, changes in common practice are clearly outlined in an easily-read, digestible kind of way. And then my last kind of bullet for, is the kind of ongoing recruitment and succession planning. Recruitment has had its challenges through COVID time, whether it's the, it's a, there's an awful high demand for, with new, getting and attracting new employees, as, as well as kind of retention these days, with the kind of work-from-home and flexible work environments that we typically, you know, a lot of our positions are kind of resident-facing forward, where we don't have as much, but I think it would probably benefit and behoove us to start to look at where we can to remain competitive in a market for new recruits. Some of the other difficulties that we have are even civil service and notice requirements. Obviously, everyone's aware of the typical two-week notice. So we have somebody who gives us a two-week, and then when it comes to civil service, and if it's a competitive position, by the time we ask for the list and recruit, and send canvas letters, and then have the ability to schedule interviews, we're well past that two weeks. Some, we have been successful this year, we have placed some kind of key roles through, that have left through retirements, and those have been kind of difficult positions to do a search for, and we have been very successful and very happy with the, the people that we have placed recently, especially in some of those higher department head-level positions. For resources in HR, there's no additional HR staffing beyond what's budgeted. We do have a current part-time vacancy that we would be looking to fill. I will say to that point, and give another kind of shout-out to Laura Sliker. HR in general in 2021 ran short. We had one part-timer who left us to, for full-time employment elsewhere, and then we had a 20-plus-year veteran retire. We took it slow to hopefully find a good fit. We have placed a full-time, but we were running very short for the majority of the year. We placed Jordan Kehoe in November, so he's full-time with us now. I think the staff, as far as training with Laura and Jordan now, the training will, will take, will take our time, will do it well, before we decide we're ready to kind of add on another newbie. So we want to be able to be in a place where both Laura and Jordan can help train a new part-time person. With training, there, I mean, so for, for, you know, any different changes, so besides personnel, you know, filling our part-time, there's no expense or capital funding, you know, needed over whatever's, whatever we had budgeted for '22, and not any specialized computer assistance or software training at this time. So for the places where, training in which employees will be involved, like I mentioned before, our training will primarily be keyed on a new payroll system and learning the intricacies of that. We're also looking at, in that migration, to make better use of some of the modules that were already available to us, that we didn't make the best use of. So to expand, you know, expand the kind of usage and functionality of the product that we're, we're paying for. So we are looking forward to that, but again, that's going to require quite a bit of time, energy into training. Professional organizations and services, we continue with the list that I've mentioned. You know, obviously, we're, we're hoping to maximize our affiliations with those professional organizations and make them best, you know, get what we can out of them. HR's interplay with other departments, I'm sure you can guess what they are. Again, with the handbook, I am kind of toying the idea and the feasibility of creating a small committee, again, for ease of language sometimes. I'm sure that you can appreciate, when you yourself know a subject matter well, and you can write it, but is that understand, clearly understandable and digestible to other people? So where it comes to the ins and outs of, you know, Family and Medical Leave Act, I might write something that then, you know, is, is hitting on higher points than need to get that into layman's terms. So I thought maybe a small committee to run past language, but also, like I said, to kind of make sure that we do have our hands around what our common practices are, and have they diverged from what, you know, some of, you know, our current language, and if so, should those common practices stand and we should revert that, or should we revert back to the agreed-upon language in our handbook? And so I think departments, they start to establish things that work for them, and I think that if we just kind of bring that around, I'm certainly not interested or, or suggesting even that we create a committee that would have employees dictate how we manage and how we, you know, what our rules and regulations that would be contained in the handbook are. But again, the, the kind of language and, you know, to get our arms around what's actually happening out there versus what's in our handbooks. Training and development, payroll, again, mandatory and useful, non-mandatory is what we'd be looking at. That, that typically affects all other departments, and succession planning and recruitment are the other things that typically, we'll, so we'll continue to work with the town supervisor and department heads as vacancies occur. So that is the end of my HR, if anyone has any questions about that. Good. My IT is next, it won't be as long. Again, not much changes there. One of the primary priorities and goals for IT will be cybersecurity. We will be looking at multi-factor authentication. MFA might be familiar to some of you, that's when either you log into a site, or, you know, you go into login to something, and they send you a code that you have to type in, or they'll send you an email typically with a numerical code. It's just a second layer of protection. We will be looking at that. You know, there's a couple third-party companies that can provide that, but we will be looking definitely. And MFA will become, it has already started to become, it didn't affect us surprisingly this year, but we are seeing that a lot of insurance companies, when it comes to cybersecurity insurance, are mandating MFA. I know a couple of our counterparts, towards the end of this, of 2021, were actually scrambling to get this in place, because their, their insurance carriers mandated that they have it. We didn't get the mandate, so we certainly expect that for '22, so that is something that we will ease into. It's going to be a learning curve for employees, but we'll get there. One of the other things that we're looking at is, we all, we already have Sophos, which is kind of a monitoring system. It blocks threatening emails and it does some other things. They have an advanced, an enhanced feature called Monitored Threat Response, which basically is a 24/7 threat hunting detection and response, you know, capabilities. It moves away from the purely notification that, you know, they've identified something that could be a possible threat to us. It goes beyond that, and to where then they have the authority and the ability to take action against that threat, no matter what time. So we're not here at 3:00 in the morning, and if something were to happen to our network or something like that, they will have the authority to act upon that response. So we're also looking at that to enhance our cybersecurity. Synergy is our third-party admin, our third-party vendor that you know. We're working on some current projects with them, and we will be looking at some others for '22. Some of those current projects, we're doing an ESX Host, which is our VMware upgrade. We're looking at Synology CommVault Net App, and we are just finishing, as some of you, actually, all of you are aware, we're just finishing our Office 365 migration. So a lot of that, other kind of things revolve around infrastructure and storage and backups. We continue to hold monthly meetings with Synergy to constantly assess our needs and then kind of an ever-changing environment. The next bullet point for theirs, computer equipment. We are on a schedule for replacement, we stick to that. We are going to continue on looking at laptops replacing CPUs, again, to look at that mobility, and if we need to close down, if we, you know, somebody just in an important key role is sick, but not too sick to work from home, or, you know, just, again, any of those, if the need arises for more remote, remote work from home. So we will start doing, we started with department heads, and the next round of laptop purchases instead of CPUs, we'll be looking, we'll be looking to target those kind of other key employees in, you know, different departments, of who can, has the ability to work from home easily and well, and who can do it. And then always assessing our current software needs and, you know, and how technology can assist us. Copiers, that's another thing that falls within IT. We have a replacement schedule, and we keep matching the machines to what our current needs are. Additional resources, non-training, Office 365 capabilities have increased over our typical Office, Microsoft Office suite of products that we had. So things like Teams, which can, you know, help instead of Zoom and all of those things, so we can, that's already, that's in the package. So we'll be making more use or, and learning about the new functionality in those different apps. Know Before is, is testing our own employees about being careful to what emails they open and things like that, if they're putting us at risk. So with theirs, the continued testing, and we will train as needed, depending on how our employees are doing. depending on how our employees are doing. And other than that, that is pretty much IT in a nutshell. Any questions on IT?
I was curious, the SOFOS. Now, is that, is that another vendor, like a synergy you're working with?
It's with, it's with Synergy, yes. But that's, like I said, our email gateways are through that. So, you know, there's spam blockers and things like that. So there, it is a level of security, kind of, you know, kind of similar to virus protections and things like that, where the enhanced monitoring will actually, again, SOFOS will send us notifications. They'll send me a notification that a certain computer is, it needs updates and things like that to keep the security patches and things like that. But the enhanced, it'll, the MRT, or I'm sorry, MTR, is another SOFOS product. It'll be an enhancement to that platform that we already use.
Yeah, just to be clear, you're not like doing this whole IT director. You're the human resource director, but we're working with Synergy.
We continue to work with Synergy. They need an internal contact. If you remember, Ann Buck, our previous assessor, she was the internal contact. And when she retired, that got passed along. Barbara and I work really closely with Synergy. So we're both, you know, in on that. Barbara and I have also worked really hard for the past couple of years to really kind of pare down and streamline the IT budget. That budget, as you could well imagine, can get out of control and, you know, the asks can be heavy. So we've done really well with, you know, you wouldn't have seen the large year-to-year rollovers of, you know, funds. We're trying to contain that, trying to put, you know, things in the actual year that they're in. So that has been a challenge, but we are getting that. Definitely get in the hang of it now. Two IT budgets under our belts, we're doing well.
This is the first time, I think, I've seen this listed as such in a priorities and goals, and it's good explanation to what's actually going on. So, thank you.
Tracy, is the 365 migration for all town-wide email addresses?
Yes. It was everyone.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. There were two different kind of licenses. There was a G3, which if you were on premises, had a computer, use the rest of the suite. Or G1s were just for kind of, if they just used email and didn't use a Microsoft Office suite. There was a considerable change in price. So we actually did really well going through who needed what. And that really kind of brought some of the cost down.
Gotcha. Sounds curious. Okay, thanks.
Are there any other questions?
Tracy, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
We're going to take a five-minute break, and then we'll be back for our legislative session. Thank you.